We're able to use our counselor part-time for counseling and part-time for marine science education. I too have attended the Masonboro field trips for fifth graders. The Audubon Society comes out and does bird watches. The, um, the North Carolina Agricultural Extension at the Arboretum has wonderful field trips and they come to your school. And I've worked very closely with Heather Keelen there, um, when, when she was at DC Virgo. We made a community garden. Um, I've worked with Noble to bring solar panel, um, project to the school because we had a teacher that wanted to do it. So I'm all about partnerships and getting kids doing hands-on kind of stuff.
Any else?
Yeah, I would like to throw in just a couple more thoughts. One is that we, I actually live right down the road from the bird or prey rescue. So using them, they have field trips there. They'll come out to the school, uh, the turtle rescue. And, and when I was the principal at North Topsil, one of my teachers actually came to me and said, "We need to do a nature trail." So we actually built a nature trail right at the school. We used some young people that were working on their Eagle Scout, um, badge and they built it for us. So we were working with, with our young people to, to build things with, uh, you know, for our students. So that was, and the students loved going out there. We actually used it even when we did a race. So we had it as part of our race. So, uh, there's just so many opportunities. We live in a great area, right by the ocean, uh, right by a lot of wonderful, uh, waterways. So just so many opportunities for us to be outside with our students. Thank you.
Ben, you have a comment?
Yep, I do. Student nutrition has always been a big, a big, uh, topic of, uh, concern in schools. And, um, now what's nutrition have to do with edu, uh, environmental education? Well, kids like projects that produce some tangible product. Say, um, you know, maybe growing, you know, growing flowers in the garden or something like that. However, lots of times kids don't know how to, how to produce, uh, garden to feed themselves. And there's a, there are programs like hydroponic gardens where kids can be involved, um, with this project almost year-long and actually provide them, uh, grow and provide themselves, uh, healthy snacks that they can eat throughout the day rather than the junk food that they bring in, into school. So this would be a, a, a great opportunity, um, for kids not only to, uh, get involved and understand the environment, but learn how to produce their own, their own food.
All right. Uh, I don't see Mr. McGee, so I don't know if he wants to make a comment or not. So we'll go on to the next question. Um, and this would be, uh, to Mr. Meek first. Um, what plans do you have to address the mental health needs of New Hanover County students?
New Hanover County, uh, suicide rates in New Hanover County are three times higher than our neighboring counties. So I would like to introduce, uh, uh, policy suggestions to the board because obviously one person can't do it all, um, that where we have more mental health workers in the schools to be able to take some of the load off the guidance counselors, uh, to, uh, work with kids who have issues that, that may not be, um, adequately addressed through guidance counselors. I know we've had, um, the, uh, the, uh, the, the health access routines in, uh, um, in, in some of the schools, but they need to be in all the schools from elementary right up into, into high school. Um, cause the numbers that I, I just quoted are from, for nine-year-olds up to 18-year-olds. Um, and that, that came from a report from WECT in, uh, 2016. Um, so giving, giving, uh, corp companies that only focus on mental health would be, would be, I want to get them in to help us out.
Somebody else have a comment?
If I could jump in, please?
Who was that?
Pete Wildebor.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, at, at my school, uh, before I retired, we actually had outside agencies such as Coastal Horizon coming in, uh, and working with our young people. A lot of the parents actually, uh, struggled getting their children to some of the mental help, uh, that they needed. So we were actually able to partner with them. Of course, you know, you had to be, you all legal and, and, and parents had to sign, but uh, they were actually able to come into the school, meet with the students, be able to support the students, uh, in school. So I think it is important that we definitely support our children, especially after this whole pandemic, when they go back to trying to, uh, nor, you know, go back into a normal classroom setting after month after month of being out of school. So I think it's a vital, vital time and I think that the more we can reach out to, to partner agencies, the better offer will be. Thank you.
Yes, um, this is Tony McGee. I think, um, what Pete just said is so important, having, having, uh, others with this type of expertise that if we notice something, and I think that's the idea of, of, of keeping our head or those in the classroom paying attention. So if something, um, something shows up in the student that, you know, of course maintaining privacy and parental permission and all of that kind of thing of being able to say, "Hey, listen, want to evaluate your child." And of course that's a, that's a, that's kind of a dangerous thing because once something is discovered, it jumps off and, and goes in so many different directions. So I think having the, the type of expertise that when counsel is required, it can come in, it can receive some counseling, some instructions. And at the same time, if there's some legal ramifications that need to be dealt with, then, you know, we cross that bridge too, but making sure that all of the legal eyes are dotted, the t's are crossed.
Any else on this question?
I would like to chime in, please, Stephanie Walker. Ready? Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm a very strong component of teaching resiliency to kids. Um, I'm a high ACEs child, so I know how important counselors were to me growing up. And I think if we can, we can focus on, you know, moving towards more, uh, trauma-informed instruction, uh, maybe reducing suspensions in elementaries especially because I know, I, I've looked at the rates of suspension in some of these elementary schools, especially our high, um, poverty schools. And there's a lot of trauma, uh, that kids have to deal with. And I think, you know, uh, if we can change our focus with that and, and maybe instead of at an early age, instead of suspending children and look at them as if they, you know, they're not being bad kids, what can we do to help them? I think that will go a long way with things like depression and stuff like that. So, I mean, I encourage, you know, instead of spending money on SRO officers, perhaps maybe spend that money in elementary schools for counselors. Um, it would be a lot, and social workers, it'd be a lot better for the kids. And that's what I'm always thinking about, what's best for them.
All right. You?
I'd like to add one, a couple things. Excuse me. When it comes to mental health, proact or react? Obviously we have records of the students that will be returning who have issues and there will be more which will be identified by counselors of which we can never have enough and also the mental health, uh, agents in our schools. Obviously accessing mental health agencies outside of our schools is important. But I, my question is, does the present board have a strategy? Because when you, when you react, you usually don't have a strategy. If you proact, you have a strategy. To deal with these kids, to identify and then deal with these kids as everyone has said, in that manner which works best for them. And if we don't have one, then we need to add that to one of the things we need to develop. Because after this school year, it's going to be a challenge in identifying what is mental health and what's just absolutely through the ceiling stress. But we've got to have a plan. It's not important, we have to have a plan, develop it, be proactive.
Any else? I think Stephanie Crable is the only one that didn't have a comment.
I do have a comment. I, I'd like to chime in. All right, I'm gonna talk really fast because I have a, a ton of ideas. Um, first and foremost, I think we need to talk with parents and have parents give their teachers just a little synopsis of what their kid is going through. You know, maybe they're going through some, you know, health issues or somebody has died or just stresses issues at home. So if the teacher knows where the kid, where the students are, then they may be able to, you know, um, in, help that in their teaching or their coaching off, off-site. We need to, um, definitely keep working with the Department of Health to get more nurses and to make sure that our school, our student to nurse ratio is there. We need to work with the Department of Health and Social Services to make sure that mental health services and our, our counselor and, I mean, our social worker and our psychologist ratios are there. Um, we need to provide any way possible more caring adults in the building so that children have an opportunity to build relationships with people. Custodians, um, the teacher's assistants, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, um, regular volunteers in the school. So that's it, sorry. And what clinics?
All right. Um, that takes care of that question pretty well. All right, um, Ms. Walker, you're next and first. Um, how do you see the role, your role as a board member to ensure that all students have equal access to a high-quality education?
Ooh, that's a, that's a really good broad question. Um, you know, I, I did my MPA capstone. It, it was on, uh, the strength of PTAs versus test scores in the high schools. And what I learned is there is a strong correlation between poverty and test scores. And that tells you a lot. It tells you that it's a bigger problem just schools. But as a, but as a, uh, school board member, you know, we're, we're the governance part, governance part of it. You know, we, we look a lot at policy and that's, that's really what I, I focused a lot on it with my background in public administration. And we want to make sure that, you know, you know, obviously the safety thing, the transparency thing, that the way that the school board runs and is, and works, it, it needs to be streamlined, it needs to work the way it's intended to work. We don't need back, you know, meetings in the background and things like that. We got to focus on children. That is, that is all I am interested in doing and I know obviously all the rest of you guys are too. But, you know, as we know, um, it doesn't always work out that way. So, you know, I look a lot at suspension rates. I look a lot at kindergarten readiness gaps. I look a lot at, you know, the concentration of high-poverty schools. You know, I focus on things, uh, from, from a policy perspective mostly, but you know, thank you. We keep going.
All right. Somebody else have a comment on that one? You? unmute yourself.
Yes, ma'am. I'm trying. Thank you. Uh, I agree with what, what Stephanie said. If those of you that saw the, uh, Port City Daily on the opportunity gap on September the 6th, uh, some statistics, which don't have enough time to, to go through, but 38% of the kids coming in in New Hanover County, as I, if I understood it correctly, um, uh, lack the skills, the skill set, uh, for coming into kindergarten, but I think the state average if I move was 50%. Uh, data says, and I'm a big believer in, in data, if it comes from the right resource, data says that a child without access to a computer or internet, their educational opportunities and their adult opportunities are severely minimized. The world is at the fingertips when you have internet and technology. There is nothing you cannot ask and get an answer. Discover, see, listen. We need technology and internet.
All right.
If I could, yeah, if I could throw in just, uh, two quick thoughts. One is, as Hugh was just talking about, um, helping those students be prepared for kindergarten. Um, at my last school, we had three, uh, pre-K classrooms, one EC, two regular pre, uh, pre-K classrooms. So I think that pre-K is huge, very, very important. Um, but I also would like to say that I think that the, as a board member, um, I think I would challenge all the rest of the board members to go to those schools. And, you know, I, it's, it's shameful that, that, uh, a lot of the teachers have said they've never seen a board member walk through the classrooms. And, um, we, these, these, especially these struggling schools, I mean, I think we need to be there, not to supersede the superintendent or the principal, but to see how we can help and be able to report back to the board. So we have that clear communication, you know, firsthand knowledge of what's going on, especially in our struggling schools. I think that's huge. And again, I, I'm going to be, uh, in and out of schools to the point where they're going to expect me to be coming in. Thank you.
So I wanted to, I wanted to add, add the point of a strategic plan. I think, I think we talked about, well, the different things that are good ideas and things that should be done. If we don't have a strategic plan in place that includes those things, then when something comes up, we get pulled off of those, off of that plan and we may not get back to it. I think, uh, to speak to what I think Hugh talked about earlier, we'll find ourselves reacting instead of proacting. So, so started out and saying, "Hey, this is the strategic plan. This is how we're going to reach certain students with certain situations." And once we, once we develop that, that becomes a, a part of our mission, making sure that we're on task with our strategic plan. And if we do that, even if we have emergency situations of things that were, were not expected, we still know to come back to that plan to make sure that we're providing a proper education for all students.
Um, so I'd like to, uh, wrap it up with, um, comments that I agree wholeheartedly with everything that everybody said there. Um, it sounds like we would all six make great board members and work, you know, cohesively as a group. But what I would like to see happen is more, um, transparent, open, commute casual even, you know, communication so that, and again, it goes back to caring adults in the building. If this, if the board members are just in the buildings, just meeting teachers, meeting students, meeting principals, I mean, like really meeting them and not just being in front of them, um, that would go a long way. I would like to see the school board have, you know, regular dialogue, like town hall kind of meetings for, for parents and then a regular town hall kind of meeting with teachers and a regular town hall kind of meeting with students so that we get a chance to hear, um, all, from all of our stakeholders. And then, and I would include parents and community kind of in, in one. Um, when I was PTA council president back in 2010, we had all of those things and I really would like to bring them back.
All right. Mr. Meek, anything to say?
I'd like to say the visibility and accessibility that both, uh, Stephanie and Pete mentioned are, are absolute paramount. A unified board is going to be the single most important thing for all the planning, strategic priorities of what will come first. I'm listing all of our answers on the dollars are rolling and how much you call these things we want to do. And we've got to have a reality therapy session, uh, of the new board to agree on the priorities. I got to go back to that quick article in Port City Daily. The information there was unbelievable. The lead teacher, I don't want to mispronounce her last name, it was Amanda Cossack, this is 2012.
I think it's Chris's turn. I think it's Chris Meek's turn. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think, it's okay. I mean, it was good. I liked it, but I would just say Chris.
Do you want to say anything?
Actually, yeah, Hugh was, Hugh was leading right into my, into my point. Um, students who believe they can, they can succeed will succeed. That's just, that's basic psychology. Um, when I taught at Williston Middle School, I was there for eight years and, uh, I saw kids in my class who were not your typical, um, AIG kids. In other words, my minority kids who were more than qualified, had the aptitude to, to, to work at or above the levels our AIG kids were, were. However, they were never given really the opportunity to. Um, you know, I was told once by, by a colleague, "Just give them busy work and keep them quiet." And I just like, as an educator, that just drove me nuts. Um, you know, but I, when you, when you go from like, if you start in elementary school and you, um, build that confidence, you're going to see more kids in the advanced classes. You're going to see, uh, in 2018, 5.6% of AP classes were black students. However, 75.28% were white students. Okay? That shows you at the high school level, you're, you're checking out. Why? Because they don't have...
All right. Um, I think we're to a point where we can begin our closing statements and so...
I don't think Pete had his first question.
Oh?
I don't think Pete had his first question. Did you, Pete?
No, he didn't.
No, but we're getting on towards eight o'clock and we were supposed to take an hour.
Um, it, it just seems like you should have a first question, but...
Well, I'll give him one. I have one.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Um, the procedure in New Hanover County for parents reporting misconduct by a teacher seems to need a revamp. How would you proceed to remedy that problem?
Well, thank you so much. Uh, as I said, my, my, the pinnacle of my, uh, campaign, it has been student safety. And I would say 100% we do need a new program. My thought is that we would bring the outside agency, the SRO, and the school safety officer, where a parent could just get on the phone, every parent would know it, um, they would contact the, this team, this team would come in, investigate. We would take the administrator out of the whole loop so the administrator would not have to investigate one of his or her teachers. Uh, and this, this committee would be transparent, so they would report back to superintendent, back to the board and back to the principal and then, and then HR also. And if we needed two or three of these committees, then so be it. But I think it's very, very important that we don't keep it internally. Uh, we use that, we have SROs. So whoever the, uh, lead SRO is, they would work, uh, hand in hand with that, uh, school safety officer. This would be a number where you could just get, get and report, uh, that person, uh, and we could do a full investigation. I think it's critical that we do full investigations so we can get our, uh, you know, our, our whole school system back. Thank you. Sorry about going over.
So I'd, I'd like to, um, answer that question as well. Um, the school system is making progress towards that. They, um, but the Title IX Committee was established last year and I am a member of that committee, um, representing the New Hanover County Council of PTAs. Um, we do have three new policies in place, 7125, 7126, and I can't remember the third one. Um, but the third one speaks specifically to students and teachers and parents on how to file a complaint. Um, there, it's a system called Ethics 360. They, um, are in the process of making sure that all teachers and, um, all adults in the building are trained on that. And then they will be rolling out a semblance of that reporting system to the students. Um, they've been doing training, um, for all the, the teachers and counselors and staff on darkness into light and they are almost complete with that. Um, we are getting ready to be, bring in training called Being the Bystander where, um, it talks to students and teachers about what to do when they see these kinds of things happening. Um, and then there's also a elementary school program that's, um, safer kids and all of that's going to be being rolled out, you know, very shortly with, um, high transparency and reporting on how that looks. Um, also too, uh, we need to make sure that our SROs are not used as disciplinarians, that the SROs are there to be, to handle a true emergency and they're also there to be caring adults in the building and try and, you know, help students out. So we don't want the SROs ever to be seen as the cops in the school. They are, they are helpers in the school. Lots of programs coming out.
Sorry, Stephanie. Your time is up.
Sorry.
I'd like to add to that, please, Stephanie Walker. Um, I agree very much so about SROs in elementary. They, they should never be used for disciplining children. That is not what they were there for. I know there may be, um, times when they are needed, um, in maybe even upper-level schools. And of course there are things that do happen that, that need them. But, uh, you know, using SROs officers as part of the disciplinary realm is just not what they're for. And I just think it sends the wrong message to students, um, especially in the lower grades. You know, we don't, we got to address the, um, the school-to-prison pipeline issues and that does include, you know, SRO officers and, um, you know, maybe moving, moving away from that in elementary. Um, I like to look at the data too first before I really kind of delve into it. But, uh, when it comes to safety, uh, we also have to create a culture up at the top especially that, um, that addresses these issues and not just has, but either we have Ethics 360 or whatever, we really need to be leaders. And that includes really looking at, uh, not allowing these things to exist in the system to begin with. So, thank you.
All right. Anybody else on that question? Seeing no one.
I'll take it. I do.
Okay.
Um, over the last 20 years, our, our county has not had a very good record on, on protecting children, um, from predators. Um, so while I've heard a lot, a lot of good ideas, um, the process broke down on multiple levels, not just in the schools, but agencies outside of the schools. Um, so I would like to, to, to do a, some, create some kind of a pilot program with the, uh, Attorney General's Office. And maybe if it worked here, it can work in other, other parts of the state, maybe, uh, you know, the country where there is a reporting system that goes right to the Attorney General and then the investigation is started at the Attorney General and then come on down. Just like in, in special education, you have the Office of Civil Rights, um, uh, violations that are, that are handled at the, uh, federal and the state level. Well, we could do the same thing with this. And, um, you know, our kids have not been protected. When a teacher has been, been, uh, covered up for, uh, from 2003 to 2017 or, or 16, okay, there's a problem there. And that kid started from the top on down. Okay? So we have to have some kind of a, uh, a, a program outside of the district.
Well, I'm, I just want to add a little thing there. It, it seems to me that if we, if we embrace some concepts of just culture, in other words, that if, if something pops up, uh, you don't just allow one person to say, "We're not going to deal with it." Something pops up, that should be automatic. The entire system should go to bat and say, "Let's get to the bottom of this." I understand saying, "Hey, let's not, um, pit the teacher against the administration." I get all of that. But it seems to me that if there is a question, if there's a whisper of any child being taken advantage of, the entire system should turn to in a just culture, culture environment that nobody's going to be punished for, for, for standing up or there's no, you know, you shouldn't have said anything kind of thing and handle that immediately. I mean, we're talking about a lot of things we're talking about doing, but it's just a simple cultural change in my, in my way of looking at it.
All right. Hugh, got anything to say on that? You're the only one that's not spoken.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I'm going to be real simple about, I guess, something about this. Uh, the principal is responsible for his or her school. If he or she has information, who is the individual that they contact immediately? Because then that individual owns it. Their responsibility should be outlined. The superintendent, I always called the superintendent, whether it did not come to fruition or, but I always said, "I've got a problem." And I dealt with several problems that the board has had. Went straight to superintendent. That way we all know who received the information, who's responsible. I think you get too many people in the mix, nothing against all the avenues for reporting, but you get too many people in the mix for responsibility, that's where it can be said that it was lost. One person identified to handle those types of situations, they own it and then we all know who's responsible.
All right. Now it's time for our closing statements and we'll, we'll start with you, Mr. Wildebor.
Unmute first. Thank you very much. Uh, I am Pete Wildebor and I would love to have your vote, uh, in November. Uh, I am a 34-year veteran, teacher, coach, athletic director, principal and assistant principal. My wife is also a, uh, longtime educator in New Hanover County. What am I standing for? Student health, getting our students safely back into school as soon as possible. Very, very important. Uh, my team has looked at the idea of germicidal ultraviolet. The hospitals use it, let's use it to get our kids back safely in school. Student safety, we've talked a lot about that. I have just a few seconds here or so, uh, but we need to keep our students safe from the inside and from the outside. School improvement, every student, every day needs to learn. Every student can learn, we need to make sure they do. And my last point is tech, uh, technological advancement, uh, access to technology for all students every day. Thank you very much. Vote for Pete Wildebor.
All right. Stephanie Walker?
Thank you. Thanks for doing the W's first. Anyway, um, I, first of all, I want to say I think schools should be open when it's safe for students and teachers, period. So that's how I feel on that. But, uh, otherwise the catalyst for me, um, as I mentioned, I grew up here. Uh, my schools were College Park, Snipes, Tylenol, Williston and Hanover. Uh, so I, I, I grew up, um, you know, in this town and I love it and I just want the schools to be improved. I feel like there's a lot of trust that needs to be rebuilt. Um, you know, the catalyst for me also was doing my, my MPA capstone study, uh, and really uncovering the disparities in the schools. And I just think, it, it made me angry. So that's really why I'm here. But I really think that we can address the inequity issues in our schools. Um, as a student that grew up here in an integrated system, it really upsets me to see that that has been undone. And that has been undone over the last couple decades, especially a policy that in 2010 that, um, basically hyper segregated our kids, not just by race, but socio-economics as well. So I really think that we can do something about that and they, the kids have just been, just left and I, that's upsetting to me. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Mr. Meek? Wait a minute. I mute your, yeah.
Okay, am I, am I good now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you for having us here tonight. Um, my name's Chris Meek, AlexChrisMeek.com. Um, my, my main issues are to make sure that the social and emotional, um, and mental welfare of our students are, is being met, uh, especially in these, in these current times, okay? That we have equity in our classrooms, both on the academic side and the discipline side, okay? okay? And having excellent educators in those classrooms. And the educators need to look like the students that they're teaching. That's something that we didn't address tonight, having, drawing in more African-American and Latinx educators into our classrooms. I'm in the classroom for 26 years. I'm a dissertation away from a PhD in leadership and education administration. I've held many leadership positions from the school level to the NCAE state level. And I've been in a deliberative body, and I know how to work with people to get them done.
Hugh? Mr. McManus?
Thank you. I have a little over 40 years of educational experience, of which all were in administration, but three of teaching. I was very fortunate to be fast-tracked into administration. My wife retired from College Park Elementary as a teacher assistant. We have had a tremendous amount of positive things that we all will agree at some point to support. I think that the new board, as I said in the opening, must be unified. We must agree with our priorities with the new superintendent. I've been the principal of the year in New Hanover County. I've been principal of the year in Pendy County. I was recognized at Hobbitt as a National Simply Burrow Island High School. I'm a UNCW Razor Walker recipient, and I'm in my 14th year on Salvation Army Board Advisory Experience, this board needs experience. I truly believe that. There's so many qualified people running, I just feel that my experience in the educational leadership arena can afford opportunities when we're trying to make hard decisions and priorities. Please check out my website, McManus for School Board. Again, thank you tonight for all of you that made this possible, and stay safe.
All right. Ms. Crable?
Tony? You're going backwards, right?
Oh, yeah, Tony. Excuse me. I checked him off, and you hadn't talked yet.
Well, you know, I'm Tony McGee. Again, thank you for this opportunity, and I want to ask those that are listening to vote for me. You can go to TonyMcGee.com, check that out. Carter G. Wilson, if I could paraphrase something Carter G. Wilson said, and he basically said there are two kinds of educations a person needs. The first one is the one that somebody else gives them, the second one is the one he gives himself. And so, from my perspective, that if we avoid the critical thinking piece, the person doesn't have the kind of education that they can move away from the classroom and actually succeed. So we got to be mindful that our children know how to think, not just memorization. Memorization is an important part of learning, but how to think. And if we do that, I think we'll do a great service in the education system here in New Hanover County, and I'm convinced it'll become a model for others to copy.
All right. Ms. Crable?
Okay, so I want you to know about me, is that I'm a team builder, I'm a collaborator, I'm a communicator, and I'm an innovative, outside-the-box thinker. I have been a substitute teacher and an active PTA member for over 20 years in New Hanover County schools. I was a part of the strategic planning team in 2006 that wrote the plan for the four years of 2006 to 2010. I do not want to be a micromanager as a school board member, but I am not afraid to ask the tough questions and to get issues raised to the forefront and get those issues resolved, and get us back on track. I believe that we need to come to our school mission to provide high-quality education with high-quality teachers in a high-quality, clean, safe, working environment. And I want to leave you with this quote from John Quincy Adams, our sixth president. "If your actions inspire you to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." And I want to be that leader for New Hanover County schools. Please vote for Stephanie Crable, honor before November the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Lower Cape Fear, the YWCA of Lower Cape Fear, and the Coastal Review Online, a publishing arm of the NC Coastal Federation, I would like to thank the candidates for their participation tonight. Our forums will be posted on our website for further viewing. Be sure to plan your vote. You can check out the League of Women Voters Lower Cape Fear website to find the early voting site information and times in New Hanover County, and you can check out voter, I mean, vote411.org for more candidate information. If you requested a mail-in ballot, we recommend you send it in as soon as possible, the earlier the better. Tune in on Zoom at 7:00 tomorrow night, for we will have the county commissioner candidates. Thank you for participating, and good night.